I'd like to call this meeting the Princeton City Council to order. Third call, roll.
Mayor Mayberry.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
McCrankey.
Would you please stand and join us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we're going to go to a public comment period. Public comment period is at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. We ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. All you have to do is come up to the podium and give your name. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during public comment? Again, we'll have that same opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. All right, with that said, we'll go down to the approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting, please.
I move that we approve the minutes for our regular council meeting on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. We have a motion and second on those minutes. Is there any questions or comments to the council? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye, thank you. Now we go to the invoices with city clerk Janet Hennig.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have one hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents. In the Department of Streets, the public improvement, seventy-six thousand three hundred six dollars and seventy-eight cents. In the Department of Public Safety, one hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, one hundred seventy-two thousand forty-seven dollars and forty cents, with a grand total of five hundred twenty-six thousand twenty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and they're now submitted for this position.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Do you have a motion and second? Any questions concerning invoices from the council? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye, thank you. And it would be duly noted that councilmember McCrankey is here. We appreciate he called and said he's running a little late. He wears a couple of hats. He's a track coach at Saint V. Cross country, so he did really well. He came in second, but we're glad to have you. With that said, we'll go down to the suspension requirement for a second reading, please. Ordinance zero point four, zero fifteen.
I move that we suspend the requirement for a second reading for ordinance zero dash two four dash zero one five.
We have a motion and second. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye.
I move that we approve the ordinance O dash two four dash zero one five. That's approving final plat for Michael's Plaza subdivision.
Do you have a motion and second on this? And what we're going to do before we vote on this, I know Pete Nelson's been working on this for about two years and a half. Pete, if you don't mind, before you just give an overview of this project, please. Appreciate it.
Well, it's not just me, several people have been working on this. And Princeton has been on the radar of these developers for a while. And they finally decided that they're at a point where they believe that Princeton can support more development. They've been looking at the lots that were kind of the southeast corner of Main Street, North Main Street and Backbone Road. The old bank sits there currently. And behind that, there used to be an eight plus apartment building that came down, I don't know, three, four, or five years ago. They believe that the area is ripe for development and they want to propose, and actually they're far beyond the proposing stage. They're well into the design and almost at the point of groundbreaking. So what they're proposing to do is that they want to assemble the land. Right now, it's about five parcels of land that starts at the Main Street corner, works its way to the east on the south side of the road, Backbone Road. They will, they're proposing to reconfigure that into three development lots. One lot on the corner will bring a Starbucks. And then the central lot, middle lot, will be an Aldi. Both these projects are things that many citizens in this community have erred that they would like to see over time. And so these developers agree with that and they believe that it can be supported here. So your mission tonight is to understand that the final plat review and the site plan review has been through the plan commission already. And the plan commission is recommending that the council approve the subdivision, which will be known as Michael's Plaza subdivision. It'll contain the three lots. And once it's recorded at the courthouse, it will be ready for submitting permits or they can submit permit applications for construction. Starbucks, I think, wants to break ground this fall. Aldi, I think, will probably wait till spring. But Aldi is still kind of still subject to how things go. So. Other questions?
Thank you, Pete. I appreciate that. And again, wrapping this up before we vote, we're excited about development coming into Princeton. We appreciate the developer with the investment that they're making. The city did not offer any economic incentives to the developer or to the individual store owner. So we try to have a level playing field because we respect the businesses that are currently here that could be affected by any additional growth. So, but we're pleased they're taking a corner that is somewhat lighted. The old bank building's been a tired-looking building for quite some time now. So we appreciate the improvements that we made. And eventually that those two buildings will go on the tax rolls, which is good for all the taxing bodies, as well as, of course, the school districts, park districts, libraries, things like that. So with that said, is there any questions or comments from the council? If you don't mind, then clerk call roll, please.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye, thank you. Now we go to the city management report.
Just a couple things, so my issue is really quick here. There is a handout up here on the table if anybody is interested in electronics recycling events. The county is actually holding one. Do the last free event for twenty twenty-four, it'll be on Saturday, October nineteenth, from nine to noon. So they always hold it at the highway department there as well. So there's a flyer out there, I believe we put it on our Facebook page, on our website as well. So it's got the details on the back, what they'll take, what they don't take, and your limit is seven electronic items. So there's some limitation to it. So if you need one of those, they're up there or check our Facebook page or website. One other quick thing that you can go to the website for or Facebook as well, we just released an RFP. Michael put this together for the depot campus, the landscaping project up there. We wanted to get some RFPs for design of what we'd like to ultimately see up there. So those will be due November thirtieth. And you can go to the website or Facebook to get the link to get the details of the Just a reminder that candidate petitions for two city council seats are available at the office of the city clerk during regular business hours. And lastly, great news, council, I already told you, but your audit presentation will be next meeting.
Oh, boy.
So that's significantly earlier than last year. We're very excited about that because then we get a little gap before we start the next one. So it did go a lot smoother this year with some of the tweaks that we made. So next meeting, we'll have a presentation from Whitely.
Any else, Teresa? Very good. Appreciate that. Teresa, when she brings this up, so our city's budget runs through April, say, April thirtieth and starts anew, May first. So that is tremendous turnaround because there's been times we've been lagging behind by close to a year. So thank you for working on that, Teresa.
We made some changes and Jen and I made some pushes, so yeah, it worked out. It worked out well.
Appreciate you both working on that. Thank you. That's great. Okay, now we'll go ahead with the board appointments to the pedestrian bicycle commission, please, Jerry.
I move that we appoint the following people to the pedestrian bicycle commission. Belinda Brown and Angie Lucas to fill unexpired terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And then Jake Newman, Leo Artega, and Mark Wagner to fill unexpired three-year, I'm sorry, to fill a three-year term ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven for all three individuals.
We have a motion and second. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye, thank you, Jerry. Appreciate that. We're going to go down to the podium for Positively Princeton. With Positively Princeton, we have an opportunity tonight to look at two totally different projects that are the facilities, one's very old and one's very new. What we're going to start out with is a report from the Owen Lovejoy Homestead. This is the actual Mr. Lovejoy's homestead. And there's a total of seven people on that committee that are appointed by the council. They include Ken Corbin, Mike Bullington, Rob Jensen, Sarah Hudson, Dana Fine, Sam Shearer, and Pam Lang. So this evening, we have Ken Corbin and Pam Lang giving an overview of the Lovejoy Homestead out there on East Prue Street. You folks want to talk to the podium? We appreciate it.
Thank you. As Mayor Mayberry said, I'm Pam Lang, and I'm going to admit I've been on the Lovejoy work for almost thirty years.
Wow.
Getting to the point, you can consider me an artifact out there. The Lovejoy Homestead dates back to the late eighteen thirties. We think it was built around eighteen thirty-six. It was made famous by Reverend Owen Lovejoy. He was from the state of Maine, and he lived there from eighteen thirty-eight to eighteen sixty-four. He was a congressional, or excuse me, congregational minister and a congressman during Abraham Lincoln's presidency. They were appointed with each other. But Lovejoy is most well-known as a conductor on the Underground Railroad, helping runaway slaves on their way to freedom in Canada. The Lovejoy Home was built about eighteen thirty-six. It's one of the oldest buildings still standing in Princeton. The family lived there until nineteen thirty-one, when the farm was sold. It passed through a succession of owners. Some of you may remember, there's actually a dog and stud's out there at one time, a drive-up restaurant. And it was slated for demolition about nineteen sixty-nine. But a group of concerned Princeton residents banded together and they persuaded the state of Illinois to buy the property and restore it as a museum. In nineteen seventy-two, the Lovejoy Home was mostly restored and a dedication ceremony was held for the town. The local pork producers had already been sponsoring an annual weekend event. And so the Lovejoy dedication was tapped onto that scheduled for Sunday afternoon. And since this nineteen seventy-two dedication, this weekend's always been known as the Homestead Festival. During the dedication ceremony, a representative of the state of Illinois officially gave the Lovejoy Homestead to the city of Princeton with the understanding that the city would always maintain the property and keep it open as a museum. A seven-person board of trustees was appointed by the mayor and still is today. And we oversee the property and advise the city on projects that need to be done. We also hire our guides so that we can give tours to the public. The Lovejoy Home was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen seventy-three. Nationwide, there's about ninety-seven, or excuse me, ninety-five thousand buildings on the National Register. But the next level up is National Historic Landmark. And there's only about twenty-six hundred properties in the U.S. that get that designation. It's very select. Among some of the properties are the White House, the courthouse at Appleman, it's fairly cemented and that type of thing. In nineteen ninety-seven, the Lovejoy Homestead was given this designation. And one of the reasons that you're given that is you contribute to the history of the United States. And the Lovejoy Homestead did receive this designation because we're considered one of the best documented Underground Railroad sites in Illinois. We're also fortunate that the Lovejoy family is still very interested in their heritage. Reverend Lovejoy was father to six children and stepfather to three additional daughters, so there's many descendants still around. They visit as individuals and they also come as a large family group at times. They came for the dedication in nineteen seventy-two for the National Historic Landmark Ceremony in ninety-seven. And then they also came for Owen Lovejoy's two-hundredth birthday in two thousand and eleven. And they continue to support us with their presence. And they also donate historic items and money for specific projects when we ask them. So we're very fortunate to still have them. And I think Ken is going to continue with the president.
Well, she said it was, the building was built in eighteen thirty-six, so we're approaching two-hundred-year-old building. And if anybody else owns an older home, it takes time and effort and money to keep those up. So one of the things we'd like to do is thank the council for taking care of us and committees and boards making sure it stays good. Our biggest expense is on a periodic basis is painting. Taking that, taking that building and getting it painted is the biggest one-time expense we have when we have to do maintenance. We're just going to do it one time and take care of it. But we work with projects and we try to break them up into pieces and spread them out over time. We just got done, or just finishing up with the chaining out of the heating system that was installed back in nineteen seventy-four, seventy-two, when it was remodeled. So we thought, now maybe it's time to take electric heaters and bring them up date a little bit. And so that's what we, we did that. And there's just a lot of little things like that. There is some wood siding that's careful to show its age, and we're going to have to work on that over the time before we paint it again. So those are the kind of things that you've just got to constantly work on. So the committee, that's probably the biggest part of our agenda on a monthly basis. We meet basically during the summer months from March until about October. During the winter, we don't have tours or anything else, so we don't meet during that time. But it's a very important thing. That's the biggest part of our agenda is maintenance. What are we going to do? What do we need to do? What do we need to keep up on? We're fortunate to have two board members added this year that have construction backgrounds. So we're looking at, and really going to look forward to having them as being able to help us know what's the right thing to do, when to do them, and what to do this year versus waiting a couple of years that would maybe cost us a lot more if we wait. So we're really looking forward to that. But otherwise, that's what we have. One of the questions he asked me to address is what can you do for us? I'd say continue on with what we've been doing, just making sure that we have good communications. I've talked to Teresa a couple times about our budgeting for capital expenditures. She takes care of us on all the other stuff. We don't have to worry about that. That makes it nice. And we deal with that and we just need to work on that. And as we see something bigger coming up, whether you know ahead of time as we can, and keep marching on and keeping it in a great shape. Any other questions? Any more?
Council?
Okay, I want to add one more. Jerry's been our council liaison about the last four, five, it feels a lot better than that. He's been a very good liaison. He's at almost every meeting. And it really helps us stay in tune with what we need to do to make sure we get their information back to you folks. Thank you, Jerry.
And he advocates for you for dollars. I know at Budget Time, he remembers what's one out there. If we're resting over nickels, he reminds us we need to put those nickels over there. How about this weekend, are you open then to tours?
Yep, we have tours. Their times are in the flyer for the Homestead Festival weekend. They're also in the paper. Pretty much the normal, our normal hours, we do Friday afternoon, are going to be Saturday morning and a Saturday afternoon. We do close during the parade time. We close that because everybody wants to be out to parade. They don't want to, they don't want to be out there. And then Sunday afternoon again, we're open again. Yep, and it's the donation-only tour. We don't, we don't charge during this weekend.
What about your break-in hours?
Break-in hours are Friday afternoon, one to four. Now Pam, correct me if I get anything wrong. One to four on Saturday and one to four on Sunday.
So you're wrong?
All right. No, we are open from, I think we open at May first and go through October thirty-first. Are you schools open? Not as many as they used to. We used to have quite a few, the third grade and the fourth, fourth grades, I think, but used to always go through. We've got a group from Lincoln, the third graders are coming from Lincoln now again, which is exciting for us. You know, four years ago, that all stopped. And so we're all having to restart with the schools and getting it back into their budgets and everything else. So we do really, the guys love having the kids come through. It's a really good way for them to start. And you would not believe how many people come through on Homestead Weekend and walk up there and you'll say, I haven't been in here since I was in grade school.
Very good. Ken, thank you, Pam. Appreciate it. So we go from the old to brand new. So this evening, we have Kent Johnson here representing the Covenant Church, which is our neighbors to the north here across the street. Kent's going to talk about the new building that the Covenant Church started about a year ago, what it's being used for and how it's going to impact the community in a positive way. Kent, you would, please?
That's twice. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a privilege to be here. I'm representing the Evangelical Covenant Church right across the street to the north. My wife and I have lived in Princeton since nineteen seventy-two and been a part of that church since nineteen seventy-two. So it's, it's our home church. For those of you who are not familiar with the Evangelical Covenant Church denomination, we're a Swedish immigrant denomination. A bunch of farmers that lived out southeast of town that immigrated from Sweden joined together in the fall, in December of eighteen sixty-eight and formed a church group. And within a year or two, they moved to town and built a building. And a few years later, it wasn't big enough, so they built the sanctuary section of the current building. It was built in eighteen seventy-seven. So we've made modifications to it over the years. We bought the old Catholic church and added it on back in the nineteen forties. Back in the late sixties, our congregation was growing and decided that we needed to expand. And part of the congregation felt like we should sell out our current facility and buy a piece of property on the outside edge of town somewhere and, and start from scratch. But we got a consultant in who looked at the whole situation. And the consultant said, you got the best spot in town. You're crazy if you leave this spot. So over the next ten years, we've dithered out and finally figured out what we needed to add in nineteen seventy-nine and eighty, which is the addition that's basically the south half of the church. We took off part of what originally was the Catholic Church, added that mostly for Sunday school rooms. Then fourteen years ago, our current pastor came on the scene, Pastor Derek Boggs, senior pastor. And things have continued to grow because Derek's focus is mission and ministry, not just within the walls of the church, but within the community and the area. When Derek was ten years old, he was in the Philippines with his father and mother and family because his dad was a missionary. And so Derek has a service mentality and ministry, ministry mentality. And so probably almost ten years ago, we started feeling the need for more space. And we started working on how are we going to accomplish this? What could it look like? Well, we just about had it all figured out and then COVID hit. And so we had to put everything on hold for a couple of years. But since two years ago, we decided it was time to roll. We finalized our plans with local architects. Michael's smiling over here. He's been okay, he's helped us out. And about a year ago, we started with demolishing a house, two-story house that was there and a garage and a storage shed and the Happy Hands Playground. And we were ready to go. I mean, this was like September twentieth. But we had to wait for the plans for the steel building and then we had to wait for the plans for the concrete. And so we finally started digging a hole the week before Christmas. And we didn't get watered away sooner than we thought we would. The water table's pretty high. So we put in a sump pump to pump the water, but then winter hit in January. I don't know if you remember January, but we had sub-zero weather and a couple of snowstorms. But since the first of February, we've been moving along strong. And we're probably only missed about five or six days of construction since the first of February. So how are we going to use this building? Well, we have children's ministry on Wednesday night where we have anywhere from fifty to eighty children that show up because the kids from our church bring their friends. And it gives us a ministry opportunity to children on Wednesday nights. We have junior and senior high programs that go on down the street now. We've got, we're using a facility for our junior and senior high programs just down the alley here until this is finished. In the, in the summertime, we have Vacation Bible School. And for the last four, five, six years, we've had to require registration and we've had to limit it to a hundred children because we haven't had any room for anymore. Well, this new facility is going to help us out a lot with space to handle the children's ministry programs that we offer. I think that one of the reasons, one of the biggest reasons that God has blessed us the way he has is because we are ministry-focused outside of our four walls. Happy Hands Preschool has been there for over fifty years. We have what was called MOPs, Mothers and Preschoolers. That's for the county. We have brief share, that's for the county. We have lots of programs like that to try to provide for those people who need it. And as we, as Pam or knows, our staff's readily available for the needs of the homeless and other people like that in the, in the community. And we are just pleased to have the opportunity to do what we're doing and to continue to expand our ministry. We have three full-time pastors and they're all fully employed. So I'd like to invite you to take a tour once we're finished here. And I'll show you around and be happy to answer any questions as you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. So we think about how in a community the size of Princeton, seventy-nine-year-old people. So, we think about how, in a community the size of Princeton, 7,900 people, we certainly have challenges like any other community. We also have opportunities to, to work on those challenges. And the Covenant Children's Home, I'm sorry, the Covenant Church, through their youth programs and Happy Hands, that's a tremendous program. My kids went through there, and a lot of you here, your kids probably went through Happy Hands as well. So, we appreciate that. So, what will happen is, we've got some more business to conduct as a council. After the council meeting ends, we will adjourn, and then you can walk across the street, and Kent's going to give a tour of the facility. It's just under a $3 million building, so it's going to be very nice to see this, there's the gymnasium and the old kitchen, things like that. So, it's our opportunity for the audience to go along as well. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to old business, is there any old business to conduct this evening? Is there any new business to conduct this evening? And is there any public comment? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the council? Before we adjourn, we just want to invite everybody, we know that there's been a lot of people that worked hard, volunteers for our Homestead coming up this weekend. I know that the full-time staff has worked hard at, our tourism director, Victoria Yepsen, she's in a meeting right now, wrapping up, I'm sure, a lot of details. So, we appreciate her efforts. The four, we have four lead couples now, we've kind of expanded that whole thing. So, the Homestead Festival is basically a lot of free activities. If we could, Teresa, we have concert, would you please?
If I can ramble and talk. Concert on Thursday evening, which is our typical Friday night summer concert series, connected with Mac Tribute Band. And Friday is a concert down at Soldiers and Sailors, and that's a country concert, Dylan Schneider. Saturday is a concert at Soldiers and Sailors Park, and that is...
Rotary.
Rotary, wait, except, I can't think of the band, but, so, yeah, there's music, and then the parade is on Saturday, so at 1:30. So, if you have the, should have put a flyer on some of your posters, so there's a whole list of things going on. If you can't find something, you...
Great. All family-friendly. And I would like to add by that, it's, I call it still our Bureau County Homestead Festival. So, all the small communities around us, we encourage the residents and communities to come and join us for the celebration, because it really is your celebration as a county. With that said, if you could, Jerry, adjourn the meeting.
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening, and reconvene for our next city council meeting on Monday, September 16th, 2024, 6 o'clock here at City Hall.
Motion in second, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCrankey.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned, and feel free to go across the street for the invited tour, please.